Welcome, everybody. Clerk Reed, would you go ahead and take the role, please?
Alderman Wen. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton.
Here.
Alderman Ravel.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Okay, all right. We have Quorum, and I suspect that Alderman Fisk and Alderman Braithwaite are on their way, and they will be here. But they, of course, are going to miss the very, very special beginning of this Evanston City Council meeting today, Monday, January 29th. Let's just go ahead and cue up the video that we have here, and maybe we can turn the lights down, and then I don't think there'll be much explanation needed after. Blake Peters, where are you? Come on, come on, come on up to the podium. All right. Blake, first, I want to thank your parents for moving to Evanston from Highland Park, so thank you for bringing Blake here. And how many of us grew up playing sports, or maybe you were playing a musical instrument, and you just wanted to have that one amazing performance? And you sat there in the driveway, and you just pretended you were just shooting the basketball, and it was the final game of the NCAA tournament, and KU vs Syracuse dawned. Syracuse always won after about 15 tries, and I finally got in with a second left, and that happened right here on Friday night with a great performance by our basketball team. They were down by two points when Blake hit that three-point shot and won that game against Maine South. Incredibly, incredibly exciting. That video that you saw there has been viewed more than 2 million times. Think about that, 2 million times, viral instantly. And so, anyway, so we have a little proclamation that we wanted to give you, and we wanted to name today Blake Peters Day. Yes, January 29th, 2018, Blake. So whereas on January 26th, 2018, the Evanston Township High School Wild Kids Boys Basketball Team played Maine South Hawks in the Central Suburban League's South Division, played at Beardsley Gymnasium, and whereas in the fourth quarter, the Evanston Wild Kids trailed the Maine South Hawks 42 to 44 with 2.6 seconds remaining in the game. And whereas Blake Peters, a freshman, by the way, thank you again to your parents, we get you for four years, a freshman rebounded the missed free throw by the Maine South Hawks and then threw the basketball an estimated 80 feet, as you all witnessed right here. Unbelievable. How many times did you practice that shot, Blake?
Never.
Even more unbelievable. Whereas the incredible video, this game-winning viral shot, has been viewed more than 2 million times around the world, whereas Blake's game-winning shot was dubbed, listen to this, was dubbed "The Number One Play of the Day" on ESPN Sports Center. And whereas Blake Peters' game-winning shot has been called, quote, "The Shot of the Year", "The Peter's Prayer", and "The Shot Heard Around Evanston". I love that last one. And whereas Blake Peters' determination and drive demonstrated at the end of that basketball game serves as a wonderful role model to all youths to never give up, even as the final buzzer sounds. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Hagerty, Mayor of the City of Evanston, in recognition of this outstanding effort, do hereby proclaim today, January 29th, 2018, as Blake Peters Day in the City of Evanston. Thank you, Blake.
Thank you.
And we have one more little thing here.
The cameras get you, so maybe it'd be on Matt's side.
We got a ball?
We do.
The mayor's chair.
Do you want me to hit it first?
We do have Coach Mike Ellis here, okay? And as we all know, the sport of basketball, or lots of other sports, are team sports. And while Blake's amazing shot has everyone here in town, and frankly, around the country, excited, I just wanted to acknowledge you, Coach Ellis.
Thank you for having us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out, you guys.
I always enjoy repping ETHS, so thanks.
It was amazing. It was amazing. Thank you. The last thing I'll say as we venture into tonight's meeting is that, you know, I think the thing with sports, and if you just take as an example Jake's shot, it shows that what appears to be impossible at times is possible, right? And a lot of the issues that we work on are difficult, tough issues, but sometimes you hit that shot, and you get it right, and I think that that is, I know that that's going to happen with this council over the next four years, and I'm excited to see the progress that we make tonight on affordable housing, which is the focus of the meeting. So, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Wally and city staff, for setting up that very special and quick proclamation. Okay, with that, City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Tim Rose is here. Tim is the director of the Fleetwood Jordan Theater. He is here tonight to plug a series of events that we have during the month of February for Black History Month. Tim, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Mr. Clerk, members of the City Council. How are you? Never been good. Hard act to follow. I'm signing him myself. I'll be his agent. So, Black History Month is coming up in February, and I just wanted to give you, now, many of you probably have an idea of where Black History Month came from. If not, I just wanted to give you just a small inkling of where this began, right? The story of Black History Month began in 1915, a half-century after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery in the United States. Now, that September, there was a Harvard-trained historian, Carter G. Woodson, and the prominent minister Jesse E. Morland founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, an organization dedicated to researching and promoting achievements by Black Americans and other people of African descent. Known today as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, the group sponsored a National Negro History Week in 1926, choosing the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. Now, the event inspired schools and communities nationwide to organize local celebrations, establish history clubs, and host performances and lectures. In the decades that followed, mayors from around the cities across the country began issuing yearly proclamations recognizing Negro History Week. By the late 1960s, now, this is in thanks in part to the civil rights movement and the growing awareness of Black identity, Negro History Week had evolved into Black History Month, and many colleges and campuses would celebrate that yearly. President Ford, in 1976, recognized Black History Month and calling upon the public to seize the opportunity to honor the often, too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Now, since 1976, every president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. Other countries around the world, including Canada and the United Kingdom, also devote a month to celebrating Black History Month. Here in Evanston, the City of Evanston and Fleetwood Jordan Theater, well, we have some free Black History Month events. You can see them up there, if you have good eyesight. Monday, February 5th, Haven Middle School and Fleetwood Jordan Theater, they have original production called Dear Ruby. I'll make sure that everyone has a flyer. The children of Haven Middle School, they have written letters to Ruby Bridges from 1960, New Orleans, the first African-American to go to an all-white school, and they have taken on the persona of people from all times of history. So even in their letter-writing, Barack Obama has written "From the Future to Little Ruby" back in 1960, encouraging her. But there are also letters that are discouraging her from going to this school, threats even. This event will take place at the Fleetwood Jordan Theater, at the North Cultural Arts Center, on February 5th at 7:00 p.m. Then, here, in the second floor, Shorefront and Fleetwood Jordan Theater present an evening of conversation with Black Evanstonian history makers up close. Former council member Dolores Holmes will be in attendance, Mr. Sam Johnson from Church Street Bar and Shop, Hecky Pile of Heckies. We also have Parnisha Jones, a professor at Northwestern University, a very prominent poet, not just here in Evanston, but across the nation. That will be at 7:00 as well. Now, this is not going to be a one-time event. We plan on having an honoring history makers from Evanston throughout the year. So this will be the pilot one, and will continue after that. On February 17th, 18th, and 24th, there is a production of Liberty City by April Yvette Thompson. Now, this is a multi-character solo performance inspired by the playwright's family's journey through the end of the Black Power Movement. We have those three dates, the 17th, 18th, and the 24th, on Saturdays at 7:00 p.m., Sundays at 3:00 p.m. We also will have Black History Friday Night Movies for the entire family. We have two. The first one, on February 16th, is The Rejoice and Shout. It's a look at gospel music and its relationship to African-American identity and Christianity. The second one, which I am very, very fond of, is called A Ballerina's Tale. It's about Black ballerina Missy Copeland is profiled in this documentary, which explores her career, her recovery from a very serious injury, and the lack of diversity in the world of dance. We are also collaborating with Impact Theater. They operate out of the Greenhouse Theater on Lincoln Avenue in Chicago, and they have two events. One of them is called 100 Acts of Resistance. And this is going to talk about how performance art can make awareness of the resistance of African-Americans in the United States and being discriminated against. And then, secondly, there is a brand-new play that is coming out, and it is called Red Summer, and they will have a stage reading of it. We also will have, on February 25th, the History of Jazz Lecture and Concert featuring the Donovan Mixon Jazz Ensemble, bringing back Marlene Rosenberg, the professor over at Northwestern University. She's an upright jazz bassist. Reggie and Marjorie Thomas, they performed in Lady Day at Emerson Bar and Grill last summer, if you saw that. And, of course, we have Mr. Donovan Mixon on guitar. Then we're going to wrap all of this up with a Black Theater Alliance Awards Incorporated and Fleetwood Jordan Theater presentation of the documentary film, Black Theater: The Making of a Movement, produced by Woody King Jr., a very prominent director and producer in New York City. All of these events will be free to the public, and we encourage everyone to come out. That is our presentation of Black History Month. Thank you so much for your time. I would love to make sure that you have the flyers. That's okay?
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions for Tim about the events? A lot of things, all on our website. In addition, there's one other series of events I'd like to plug, and that is something called, a show called ID. The City, Evanston Township High School, have joined with Mudlark Theater and the Art of Evolution Theater to remount the original play, ID, a show about racial and cultural identity in Evanston. ID examines both the burdens and privileges people inherited, and how that continues to shape their personal relationships and communities. The play opens on Friday, February 2nd, at 7:30 p.m., and continues Sunday, February 3rd at 3:00 p.m., and Monday through Wednesday, February 5th to February 7th at 7:30 p.m. Performances will take place at the Little Theater at Evanston Township High School, 1600 Dodge. Tickets are $10 for students and $12 for adults. They may be purchased online at mudlarktheater.org. The February 5th show is sold out because the City of Evanston is providing tickets for our staff to attend that show. So certainly the council's invited to that, or any of the other events, so if you'd like to go on the 5th, please let Pat Effiem, our Equity and Empowerment Coordinator, know. Otherwise, again, a full plate of issues for Black History Month. So thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wally. Thank you, Tim. We're doing quite a bit on Black History Month. It's wonderful to see. I am too going to put a plug in. If you didn't have the opportunity to see the play that's put on by Art of Evolution and Mudlark, by teenagers and even kids younger than that here in our community, it was powerful, incredibly powerful, and I'm pretty excited that that's going to be brought back for, I forget if it's five or six showings of this. So terrific.
Mr. Mayor, just one last item, if I may. I'll draw your attention to the ante room. We are placing the "All People Are Welcome" signs up in all of our city facilities. So those took a little bit longer with the holiday season to procure and to replicate, but they are all done, and they're being hung around the city buildings and facilities. They are all in different languages, and so while the sign here in the ante room is in English, the rest are in various languages, which we'll be putting in prominent locations at all of our city facilities. So that is also another piece of our outreach work for equity and empowerment. And that concludes the announcement.
Terrific. Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk, do you have any announcements?
Yes, a few announcements. I want to announce that mail-in ballot applications are available out on the table there, as well as in the clerk's office during our regular business hours. You can also, mail-in ballot applications should be completed and returned to either the clerk's office or mailed to the county clerk's office before the 15th of March. Also, early voting begins March 5th through 19th here in the Civic Center, down in Room G-300. We'll make this announcement at every meeting between now and the end of the election. And then also, residents are encouraged to come and volunteer with the clerk's office on Mondays and Wednesdays, and we'll have some Saturday times to reach out to neighbors to alert them to the upcoming elections, and how to vote, where to vote, and how to register. So, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Clerk Reed. Okay, we're moved next on the agenda is public comment. We have 15 people that have signed up for public comment tonight. I think everybody knows the council rules that we have allotted 45 minutes for public comment, and I ask that everybody be respectful. Everybody will get up to three minutes if you need it. If you've heard somebody else say it, you can say, "Hey, I don't need to speak anymore. You know, I want to make sure we hear from you", but I also really want to make sure that this council has the opportunity to have some dialogue tonight about affordable housing. That's really, really important. So let's just all continue to be respectful of each other's time during public comment. So I'll rattle off the first three each time, so you guys know if you're coming up. First one, looks like we've got Lenny Lampkin, and then we've got Doug Sharp and Michael Donaroff. And again, I apologize upfront if I mispronounce someone's name. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for holding a meeting on affordable housing. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and all the women, Rue and Fleming, for responding quickly to my email regarding Ms. Steele and her possible being thrown out of her lifetime home on Gray Street here in the fifth ward of Evanston. Her situation is an emergency one, brought upon our city and her family by predatory lenders, but it's a symptom of a larger problem, requiring a citywide answer. We held an emergency meeting to discuss the minimum wage. We need an emergency ordinance to prevent evictions during the winter months, especially of elderly and the disabled. She has a disabled son who lives with her. This needs to go stronger than the Cook County ordinance, which only prevents evictions when the weather's below 15 degrees. So today, it's above 25, so Ms. Steele could be thrown out of her house. Thursday, it'll be below 15, and she'd be homeless and on the streets of Evanston. The proposed special orders that you're considering tonight are very good. They're a start in a comprehensive affordable housing ordinance, but that's what we need, a comprehensive ordinance, not pieces. And I would suggest they need some additional parts. SB 5 is lacking something for existing homeowners. It talks about new homeowners, first-time homebuyers buying housing, but what about the long-term residents who are struggling to hold on to their home? And secondly, while there's stuff in here addressing renters, and I realize the state law prevents us from having rent control again, but we could have a resolution suggesting that the state legislature get rid of the law, and if they don't want to get rid of it, then at least allow local communities to consider rent control. Thank you very much, and thank you for looking into affordable housing.
Thank you, Lenny. Next up is Doug Sharp, then Michael Donaroff, and then Gillian Gilburns or Gillerns.
Good evening. My name is Doug Sharp, and I am with Reclaim Evanston. I've already presented our proposal on affordable housing to the Planning and Development Committee, but I do feel, now that we have the full council here, it's worth restating them, and I'll be brief. Our proposal consists of three interrelated elements for affordable housing. The first element is that council impose a nine-month moratorium on consideration of any new large-scale residential developments. Our motivation for proposing this is not to block development, but is simply to allow time for the planning that is needed to develop a plan for affordable housing in Evanston. Regardless of whether there is a moratorium or not, we all need to focus our attention on the second element of our proposal, which is an integrated plan for increasing affordable housing. There are currently three different city committees, Planning and Development, Administration and Public Works, and the IHO Subcommittee, working on three different proposals related to affordable housing. These different proposals need to be brought together into an integrated plan. We therefore propose the city take the next nine months and develop such an integrated plan that identifies the best solutions for increasing affordable housing. The third element of our plan, and the one that we feel is most urgent, is to significantly increase the financial resources in the Affordable Housing Fund. To do that, we propose to, that the opt-out fee for large residential developments be increased to $300,000, which will make the opt-out fee commensurate with the market rate of constructing a unit. This increase in the fee would significantly increase the pool of funds available in the Affordable Housing Fund. These are our proposals, and we look forward to participating in the ongoing conversation around affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Michael Donaroff, Gillian Gilburns, and then Marilyn Shai.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Northwestern Student Government. As we all know, affordability is an issue that touches every corner of Evanston, but by changing accessory dwelling units occupancy limits, the city is attempting to carve out a narrow exception to the three unrelated rule. No doubt, this exception will positively impact affordability in Evanston, even after its time in committee. But as we move forward with the discussion on affordability in Evanston, it's time we stop neglecting and dancing around the root issue here. The affordability of rentals is an issue for students, too. Rentals can be upwards of $4,000, $5,000. These massive sums leave students with no other choice but to share spaces in order to split these costs. Yet the laws of Evanston make this necessity an illegal process. As a result, approximately 40% of Northwestern students who live off-campus are forced to grapple with this ordinance if they wish to live in this community. The three unrelated rules have placed well over 1,000 students, Evanston residents, into a vulnerable position. The precarious nature of their living status has left residents liable to extortion and neglect from their landlords. Following me, you'll hear a few stories from my friends and classmates. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michael. And if I can ask everyone, we've got Gillian next, then Marilyn, then Peter Dalton. If I can ask everyone, when you come up, if you wouldn't mind giving your name, and what ward you live in, if you know your ward, that would just be helpful to the folks up here at the podium and to people at home. Thank you. All right, do we have Gillian Gilburns? Okay. In this way, you guys can correctly pronounce your name, since I've probably not done so.
Yeah, pretty close. Gillian Gilbert, first ward. I'm also here representing the Northwestern Student Government. We have two different stories to kind of explain what has been happening to students, rather than just presenting the data to you. So the first one is, four students were looking for an apartment in Evanston. They found an apartment, but in order to afford the rent, they had to split it amongst the four of them. They asked their landlord if it was okay to have four people on the lease, to which the landlord said that it was okay, and they moved forward with the signing. Then, a few months later, the landlord came back and asked why there were four names on the mailbox, because having four people living in this apartment was against Evanston City Code, but told them that he would be willing to look the other way if they could pay another $1,000 to their rent, otherwise they would be evicted. Another story is an instance where a student was living with their friend and encountered a mold problem in their residence. They asked the landlord to come by and take a look, and the landlord did come by and tried to fix it, but ultimately, the mold came back. The student then asked if they could call a city inspector to come in to deal with the mold, and the landlord said that they could, but that there were four people living in the apartment or subsection of the house above them, and that if they were to call a city inspector, it was possible that those four students would be evicted, which kind of just left them in a crummy situation with mold in their home. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. Marilyn, or Maylin?
Thank you. I'm Maylin. I'm also a student at Northwestern with Michael and Gillian, and we're here to say this. As a small first step, we propose changing the occupancy limit from three unrelated people to four unrelated people. This tackles affordability barriers more directly and more efficiently than recent discussions on rooming houses and/or accessory dwelling unit rentals. This also does not neglect students, and this tackles affordability barriers in communities that actually need it. We understand that there are concerns about noise and parties, but there are ready ordinances, nuisance ordinances, there to help address these violations. We also understand that there are concerns about density and overcrowding, but the three unrelated ordinance doesn't help to prevent this. The only thing that the three unrelated ordinance is doing is creating a vulnerable population of students and tenants who can be easily subject to extortion and have to widely flout this ordinance because of affordability issues. This clause is outdated and divorced from reality, and it is time we amend it and raise the occupancy limit from three to four. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to learning more about this and discussing this further. Thank you.
Thank you, Maylin. Okay, next up, we've got Peter Dalton, then Bessie Simmons, then Sue Lalabac.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Peter Dalton, and I'm current resident at Hilda's Place. Now, it has been over a year since I've become housing-challenged, and I'd like to just say, just as Hemingway would say, just like bankruptcy, it happens a little at a time, and then all at once. Now, for 37 years, I have lived with a handicap, and with that in mind, let me see, with that in mind, it's, it has been very, I've lived with it, and in those, another thing is, today happens to be my birthday, so I become eligible for the wonderful world of fixed income. Now, I have lived long enough to see what a strong middle class means to a community, and I fear that we're not leaving that legacy for our children. I think it's a very important legacy, but your efforts in a strong inclusionary housing ordinance will go a long way to show prudent stewardship of what we leave behind for our children. Now, one of the things I especially like in the ordinance Now, one of the things I especially like in the ordinance is leveraging external revenue sources. That sounds like an ideal way. And just for an example, I'm thinking of the Cook County Housing Authority, which I saw do a presentation here a few weeks ago. But I do have concerns about the fee in lieu of affordable units practice. To me, that reminds me of a time back during the Civil War where wealthy families would actually pay for poor people to do their military service in place of their children. Short-term revenue spurts do not build a future. Actual affordable units are a more sustainable and equitable solution to the long run and having intrinsic value that cash does not. The other steps you're proposing are equally as important, like assistance to private landlords to make affordable units will go a long way to maximize the available housing inventory. Now, I applaud your efforts and commitment to energy to bring about a result of a clear and enforceable IHO. I want to thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Peter, and happy birthday.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. All right, next up, we've got Bessie Simmons, then Sue Lalabac, then Tina Payden.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bessie Simmons, and I believe I belong to the 50th Ward in Chicago. However, I was born and raised in Evanston, but I live in Chicago Rogers Park area now because I couldn't afford marketplace rent in Evanston. I work in Evanston at Connections for the Homeless, and I'm here today to thank you for your attention to the issue of affordable housing and to share my story about how important with housing has been to me personally. In 2014, I experienced homelessness due to an eviction and a job loss in a marriage that did not work out. I ended up leaving Chicago's West Side and moved into a family shelter in Evanston, Family Promise. I stayed in the shelter for two and a half months. And while living there, I was given a housing opportunity through Connections for the Homeless to participate in the TIBRA program. While living in the program, I completed graduate school. I was able to pay off some debt, and I learned basic skills on how to maintain stable housing. When I aged out of the program, I went on a housing search for another apartment, which was another trialing area, because I had a prior eviction and could not pay the three times the market rent that most landlords were looking for. This led to me experiencing homelessness, again temporarily, for another three months. I eventually found an apartment after three months, which still exceeds my rent, well, still exceeds my income throughout the month. However, I do have stable housing. My experiences of homelessness have shown me how valuable programs like TIBRA and homeless prevention fundings can be to people that live in a community that are, can afford market rent. I hope that in your planning process, you consider the broad range of needs that people have in our communities, including those like mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Bessie. Sue, then Tina Payden, then Carlos Sutton.
Great. Good evening, everybody. I'm Sue Lalabac. I work at Connections for the Homeless, and I'm representing Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. I want to thank Bessie and Pete for speaking. They did so because they have really come to the realization that many of their issues are caused in large part by systemic things that need to be changed in our society. And they are looking to take action on those, so I really want to thank them. You heard a little bit about their stories. And between just the two of them, they have already benefited hugely from programs that the city of Evanston, together with the nonprofits, have put together. They have used our drop-in services, our shelter program, the Home TIBRA program, homelessness prevention funding, employment services, medical and dental services through some of the nonprofits, as well as housing search support. They are on their way to stability, but because of the lack of affordable housing in the community, they are going to be housing cost-burdened for some time. They will be paying more than 30% of their income on rent because there is not enough affordable housing. It's not just in Evanston. It's also in Rogers Park. It's in the region, and we're all aware of that. And I think my point is, there is, in spite of the many programs available, there is still a gap, and there is no one program that's going to fill that gap. We do not have enough resources. So I am encouraging, again, that the city do put together a plan that not only identifies what we can do, but identifies what that gap is, what the strategies are that we're going to go after for filling that gap, and then figuring out a strategy for obtaining the resources. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Next up, Tina Payden, then Carlos Sutton, then Sarah VanderWicken.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Council, and City Clerk. My name is Tina Payden. And by the way, Bessie that just spoke, she was in one of our units for two years, and she was in the TIBRA program. And then she moved along after that. That apartment has been rerented to another TIBRA program client. Mr. Alderman suffered it, emailed me this weekend, and I'm going to read a little bit of what I talked to him about. As you see from our website, paydenproperties.com, we provide all of our tenants, regardless of source of income, race, or religion, a clean, decent, and safe apartment. We are one of the few landlords that has three- and four-bedroom units in Evanston that rents to people that are on affordable housing programs. We have many tenants that come out of homeless shelters, refugees, have bad credit, have evictions, have filed bankruptcy, and have lost their jobs and homes. As we have said many times, we currently have 15 affordable units that houses 53 units, which is half of our units that we rent to some kind of subsidy. HACC Section 8 vouchers, Connection for the Homeless TIBRA program, ESG Trilogy, Catholic Charities Bridge to Home Program for Single Individuals, Family Promise, Center of Concern are some of the agencies we currently work with. I've been asked in the last couple of weeks if I could have a waiting list for our units as they become available from Catholic Charities New Hope Program for Families, YWCA, Wings Salvation Army, and the City of Evanston General Assistance Program. Our four-bedroom, two-bathroom, 1,500-square-feet apartment is currently occupied by a TIBRA family members, six in the household. That unit is rented for $2,045, which is the maximum I can ask under HUD. If you will look in Evanston, you know there is no four-bedroom available for $2,000. We want to continue to provide affordable units in Evanston because we are Evanstonians and want to see that everyone gets a fair chance at living in a nice area with good schools. Unfortunately, we are not going to be able to continue to provide this type of housing because we are not going to be able to pay the bills. Then we will become homeless, too. We have been asking the city for years for some kind of assistance for landlords like us that provides housing for some, everybody needs housing. And you desperately need landlords like us that are continuously helping to provide these units. Lastly, we have looked at the Landlord Rehabilitation Assistant Proposal and are very disappointed. Once again, the word loan is part of the program details. If I want a loan, then I will go to the bank and get a loan. The city gives grants, not loans, to many restaurants and stores in Evanston. Hecky's Barbecue, $11,500 for facade. Good to Go, $50,000 for build-out, plus $25,000 for CDBG. Mount Everest, $10,700 for facade. Lake City Cleaners, $10,648. Red Hot Chili Peppers, $10,700 for facade. And Gross Point Plaza, $16,500 for facade. I will wrap it up. But the assistant, the landlord assistant rehabilitation program is a joke, and it's a loan again. So if you want to continue to provide housing for low income, then you need to help the landlords that are providing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tina. All right, we've got Carlos Sutton next, then Sarah VanderWicken, and then Betty Esther.
Good evening, Mayor Haggerty, City Manager Bobowitz, City Clerk Reed, members of the City Council. I'm Carlos Sutton, 1821 Darrell, a proud 70-year resident of the 5th Ward. I commend you for your efforts this evening to address the crisis of affordable housing needs in Evanston. It's not enough. We can do more, and we need to do more. I want to address specifically SP 3 and SP 6. SP 3 does not meet our needs. Maybe I'll put a restaurant in one of my units and get a grant. I've seen the advertised by Tom Selleck on TV, and I went to several financials to see if this was a good deal of our reversible mortgage. And I was warned, especially elderly people, should not be involved in any loans and grants on their properties at this time. The same consideration given to landlords should be given to the people who are looking for a place to stay by providing landlords the assistance they need. There are 30 families earmarked for SP 6. They do not meet the specific housing needs as identified by HUD and our community. I challenge you to do more, to do better, support us, give us the same treatment that you give business owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Sarah VanderWicken, Betty Esther, then Doreen Price.
Hi, as you said, I'm Sarah VanderWicken, and I live in the 1st Ward. I want to congratulate city staff for having done, over, you know, the last several months, starting at the end of October, really an amazing job pulling together data and explaining where things are in the city and what the housing stock is and so on. And they have pulled together a tremendous trove that should be used. And it should be used by looking, the council in developing an affordable housing plan needs to look at what exists, where the needs are, how to be able to make sure that housing, that affordable housing is not concentrated in identifiable places so that it becomes something, so is with the Housing Opportunities for Women Plan, where people were rejecting more affordable housing in their community because it isn't spread around. There really needs to be a thoughtful way of putting all this together, planning so that as time goes on, as some units are lost because they've timed out, you know, being, having to be affordable, that there are things to replace them. There needs to be a consideration, and other people have spoken to that. And it's because there's a concern that with the sense of urgency that people have, that we've recognized this as a crisis and it's an important thing for the city to deal with, that they really want to get things going and jump on kind of, different kind of bandwagons. And that's not doing a service to the people who need this housing. I mean, it obviously has to be done forthwith and, you know, full steam and so on. But please don't just make a patchwork of this. And you can use the data that the staff has put together. It's very valuable and really can be of use. And similarly, the fund, the Affordable Housing Fund, I don't know if there's any constraints on that other than that it be for, you know, making more housing available, affordable housing available. And it seems like a big honey pot at this point that people are kind of dipping into or wanting to dip into. And there has to be strategy around this, and some criteria and some planning. And that's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Betty Esther, then Doreen Price, then Madeline Ducrey.
Good evening. My name is Betty Esther, and I live in the 5th Ward. Tonight, I would like to invite the council member and city staff and people that are watching us on TV tonight to February 8 at 7:00 PM at Family Focus. That's when we will do our fifth presentation on the civilian police oversight proposal. This past Monday, January 22, the action of the Police Department underscored, I say again, underscored, the need for a police civilian oversight board of our Police Department. Now, changing gear. The affordable housing proposals and things that are here, they are a start, but like the lady said before, they are piecemeal. They should all be given to the task force that was set together to plan and to look at this. Because when you do one, you miss something on the second one. Then you think of, okay, we'll do this one here, like SP 3. Then you have to go back and see, oh, we didn't put that in SP 2. It should be done all at one time, like the inclusionary zoning that was made back in 2007. It was a process, a consistent study process. We haven't did a survey really to evaluate what is the housing stocks here in Evanston. When we talk about this, we haven't know what is the population, what is the unit. And we have one SP 6, which is stating, you know, you go to who? You look at SP 3, and you're talking about doing for people earning 60% of the AMI. What about those that earn 50% and 30% below? What do we do for them? Those was the one that we was talking about, and you need to address because that population of the community is almost half your core population, which makes up the, you to be able to get the CDBG funds, the home funds, and the McKinley funds. That is what HUD looked at. Those are the people HUD looked at and says, you qualify to be your own participating jurisdiction and receive your funds here in Evanston. You are neglecting them, but you are using the money that they bring to the city and not helping them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. We've got Doreen Price, and then Madeline Ducrey, and then Priscilla Giles is the last one.
I'm glad there were speakers before me that were so powerful in terms of summarizing the urgency and how funds could be better looked at in terms of allocation, both in the giving and the acquiring. I second, third, and fifth them motion to pursue them with all diligence. The whole versus the pieces, I agree. I was a project manager. There's no way that you can lead a project not knowing the whole. And the people who work on the pieces are usually energized by realizing there is a hole, and things go faster, actually, than if people have the little pieces, then they're left to run with the individual pieces. And I was complimented on that, and it just was common sense to me. In terms of my particular issues, nothing has been raised, but it's all included because of similar issues, in fact, very complimentary issues. And it has to do with the seniors who are trying to age in place. And we're part of your, a bit a little slipping out of the middle-class-type people when we need help. And I'm in the process of trying to get help with regard to fixing my house through Rebuild America. They are overwhelmed in terms of the number of people they're helping, and they're helping more than just Evanston. They're helping Skokie and all that. In terms of the money and the need, they see an overwhelming need that is not being met. I'm one of them, that they may only have to do a part of it and not all of it because they don't have enough money. I hate to live in Evanston and have that happen to anyone, and it's happening to me, so I know it is happening to others. So I think that the fund should be now considered. so I know it is happening to others. So I think that the fund should be now considered helping people like me to get my house fixed up so I can get a renter and I'll be able to stay. Not only that, but the person from Evanston, I, I'm from Northwestern. So having a Northwestern person, young, old, I don't, I love diversity. I always have. I was part of a diversity team, management steering team at my, at my former job. So I can do a lot of good if the city invests in me, and that's the investment part, Mr. Wilson, that I'd like to see a turnaround in conversations as being asked for by, about people regarding charity versus investment. And if we look at it as an investment, then giving people money when they can't get loans, like me, because I have a reverse mortgage, is an investment. And that investment will pay you back. And people who work with me or know me know that I love people and I want to help. So I will pay the city back and I will pay other people back. And an investment in me, like investment in a number of these people, will do exactly the same. So please don't ignore that part at an opportunity. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Doreen. All right. And then the last, we've got Madeline Ducrey, and then Priscilla Giles. And just for the, for the record, Alderman Fisk and Alderman Braithwaite have joined us. So we have a, all nine members of the council here, City Clerk. Okay, if, how about we go to Priscilla? He will go there.
My name is Priscilla Giles. And as I drive or walk around Ridge Avenue, Asbury, Sheridan Road, Ridge Avenue, Asbury, those neighborhoods, and I see lights in basements and attics. I wonder why it's against the law for it to be in the Fifth Ward. I am Priscilla Giles, Fifth Ward. If diversity and affordable housing is truly a goal of Evanston, the poor, for the poor and homeless, because of absorbent rents and lack of job opportunities here, Evanston residents, including students, those on fixed incomes, who've been residents for years, if more than three unrelated residents can live in peace in one residence, or live in basements, attics, and coach houses without problems to the city, and I'm sure there are laws and rates to keep that from happening, Evanston can find other needs to meet. The towers being built in downtown and around Evanston is really an example of overcrowding, not three, four, or how many ever people may live in one apartment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Giles. Okay. All right. Well, I think Madeline Ducrey must not be here, so we've had, we've had everybody.
She was on her way, but she apologized. She had to go see about her brother.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Esther. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here and for contributing to the conversation about affordable housing in Evanston. I know everybody up here at the DIAS appreciates the commitment that everyone in this room has. So with that, we've completed the public comment section of the City Council meeting tonight. We're now going to move on to special orders of business. As everybody does know, this is a special meeting, so all we have on the agenda are special orders of business. And the, the first item up, SP one is the Affordable Housing Plan. And staff will update and present council with the activities undertaken since January first, two thousand eighteen, related to affordable housing. And this is for Action to Accept and Place this on file.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, members of the City Council, Wally, City Manager Bob Kowitz, and Clerk Reed. I'm Sarah Flax, Housing and Grants Administrator. And I'm just going to quickly take you through a PowerPoint that'll sort of cover off most of the items and then hopefully allow Mayor you and the council to bring back and discuss the ones that you would like. I think that might be more productive than trying to go item by item through each memo. But, so, we're here to give you an update on affordable housing. Activities to date, there have been a lot, as somebody mentioned, some action items for tonight, and also discussion items to get more direction from you. Activities to date, we've had a number of items, well, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Subcommittee has had its first meeting. We've brought three different items to A and PW, and they are also on the agenda tonight, the rental program, landlord assistance program, homeownership programs. At P and D, we've brought accessory dwelling units and the effect on occupancy limits, the three unrelated. First meeting of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Subcommittee was January seventeenth. Discussion items included having us develop a housing finance workshop for the Subcommittee, discussion of the timing of the fee in lieu as a way of motivating onsite units, and also talking about subsidizing existing units more broadly to create affordable housing as a way of using the fees in lieu. The Subcommittee will have its second meeting on February seventh. We're going to move into room twenty-four oh four because it was pretty crowded in the Aldermanic Library. And the third meeting timing will be determined still. That hasn't been set. Action items that we are asking the council to provide us feedback on to date tonight is, we have a request to refer to the Plan Commission, direction to amend the zoning code to allow rental of accessory dwelling units to people who are not members of the family that are currently living in the primary dwelling unit. That was discussed, and it was identified as a, as low-hanging fruit to get accessible, affordable dwelling units into existence. We have some things we'd like you to consider, and then we'd come back with a more specific plan because we do believe that all those units should be registered and licensed, and, I mean, registered and inspected, all the way all of our regular rental is. So we also have fleshed out the following direction at our last meeting, the Pilot Landlord Rehabilitation Program. And as you may recall, this program, per direction from council, was based on the storefront modernization program. We use the term grant and we use the term forgivable loan. All of the storefront modernization grants are in fact recorded as forgivable loans on the properties. There has to be some way of keeping compliance, but there is no debt service due, and there is no payment due unless the property were to fall out of its affordability or not maintained. So it's that same process. So that, we'll ask you for feedback on that. Discussion items, Alderman Fisk had requested information on rooming houses. So there's a memo with information on rooming houses in Evanston. Most of them are actually Northwestern student housing of various types. And many things that we don't think of as rooming houses are hotels, the YMCA's SRO are actually inspected and licensed as rooming houses. So it's a little bit misleading when we just look at those numbers. Evanston Rental Program, we want to just keep that in front of council to get feedback on what to do next, when you are ready for us to do that, because it's something that we've, has been agreed that we have to look at, that can be a very good way of getting people into affordable housing quickly. As we mentioned, the IHO Subcommittee progress and Housing Finance Seminar, we discussed. And then our next request is that the second quarterly meeting could be on our April thirtieth, where we once again, how conveniently have a, a fifth Monday. So really, our wish is that you would take the items as you would like to discuss them and ask questions, give us, you know, that we can provide feedback or respond, might be the most productive way.
Terrific.
If you don't agree, let us know that, too.
Terrific. Thank you, Sarah. I think that we very much will probably want to do that, having a dialogue up here and then asking you as well. I know Alderman Rainey would like to start it off.
Well, I, I don't want to get into a discussion of the Evanston Rental Program, but I just want to clarify one thing, because I, I don't want it misunderstood. And I, as you said, we can't really get into the program until we have some payment in lieu from the developers. And we're going to talk a lot about when those payments are going to come. But that program, in my vision, is not a program to develop, to get people into affordable housing. That program is to make market rate housing affordable for people who cannot afford it now by virtue of a subsidy to those people. So it's, it's not to create quote-unquote affordable housing in the sense of making housing cheaper. It's to subsidize people so that they can afford market rate housing, which is a little different. Okay?
Sorry if I misrepresented that.
No, no.
I think of it as virtual affordable housing because we've made it affordable to them.
Yes, making it affordable to, but it is market rate housing, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just.
Okay. So let, let me just say, so one of, from my, from my perspective, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of great ideas out there. And you guys have done some terrific work, the whole housing team here in Evanston. To me, I think one of the, the areas that we're, we have to reach some consensus on, or if we can't, you know, reach it up here, or the council can't reach it up here, perhaps it's something that's tasked to the Housing and Homelessness Commission, is how we ultimately allocate, you know, the resources, right? There's lots of needs. There's needs with low-income families in Evanston. There's needs with seniors in Evanston. So, and we do have a limited, we have limited dollars, right? We have lots of greater needs than we have dollars. And how do we want to allocate, allocate that? Right now, the way it works is pretty much people come up to the council and something's on the agenda and have like five hundred and fifty thousand, and we're going to go buy a, a two flat with three, you know, three bedrooms. Or I've got this other program, would you fund this? I think all of those things, you know, make you feel sort of good, like, okay, we're doing something here. But it doesn't seem to me to be as strategic as, you know, it could be. And I think we heard a lot of people tonight, you know, raise, raise that point, including Sue Lalbach, who, you know, spends a lot of time working in this area. So Alderman Wilson.
I guess a couple of points I wanted to hit. With regard to the accessory dwelling units, I definitely think we should, should proceed with that. I'm not comfortable, though, with the, with the idea of sending that along to the Plan Commission with the, with the rent control kind of piece to that. I have a very strong preference that we just send that to them for how that would get implemented. A couple of things that, it just off the top of my head when I looked at this, you know, what are you going to do for somebody who, maybe somebody's been renting a unit not in compliance for a period of time. And it personally, you know, okay, it breaks the rule, but generally speaking, I don't think that that's, that's a horrible crime. Okay? So is the landlord going to have to evict the person if they don't qualify? I mean, you know, these are things that I think that could very, very quickly arise. So I would like to just send it to the Plan Commission, but without that rent control aspect on it. I don't know how the rest of the group feels. I just, I don't even want to go to, to the amnesty provision. I just want to send it without the rent control component.
Alderman, when?
I, I would. I agree with that. I, I think for, we don't have that many of these accessory dwelling units. I don't, I think the, the cost to try and figure out whether they are rent controlled or not, I think is, is too, too much burden and too much administrative cost. I think we should just allow people to rent them as they would like to, to, most of them, they vary tremendously in size. And so I, but I think that they're an asset that we should tap into here in the community. And we should let people who have been illegally renting them find a way to come forward and make sure that they get properly inspected.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alderman, Ruth Simmons?
Could you explain the amnesty? I'm not sure.
I think in one of the staff memos, that because I think there are some people out there who have been renting them, sometimes I think a lot of people may not even have been aware that they weren't supposed to rent them unless it was to family members or unless it had been continuously a rental unit without interruption for a long period of time. And in the staff memo, there was a suggestion that in order to get people to come in and, and register them so that we can properly inspect them, that we have an amnesty period. If you've been improperly renting it, that, you know, we're not going to make you pay fines. It will just have you come in, get registered, and now, now we'll have a, we'll be able to inspect them properly so that anyone you rent them to now knows that they have a safe inspected unit.
Okay. I'm, I don't want to completely abandon the discussion of managing the rent on the accessory dwellings. That was one of the, one of the options to expand our affordable housing. So if we could even talk about some sort of a credit or incentivizing having the accessory dwelling be affordable, if we could just continue discussing that before we move it to committee, omitting the affordability.
I guess I'd rather send it to that, to the Plan Commission without that piece. Because they're not going to, I don't think they're going to, if we send it to them with that, it's going to come back with, okay, here are the rent controls. And I think that's a conversation, if we want to have that, that's a conversation we as a council have after we get what it looks like as far as the zoning change. Because it's going to require zoning change, and that's what the Plan Commission, I think, should be focused on. They should be focused on the zoning aspect and not on, on the rent aspect.
Okay. I didn't understand that.
Okay. So I just kind of gave a super short. And I do think we should, of course, have the amnesty component.
Okay. Alderman, Revel.
I'd like to agree with Alderman Wilson and Alderman when about sending it to Plan Commission. And I, I do have problems in my mind with requiring that the affordable dwelling unit be affordable, however we might define it. I think it's important to think about, one element of affordability that comes with legalizing auxiliary dwelling units is it makes the primary residents more affordable to the people who already live there because they may be then getting some additional income. And so it, it helps people stay in their homes. So I think even without the requirement that the ADU be affordable, we are going to be increasing, increasing the ability of our residents to stay in their homes. And that's another way to address affordability.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Revel. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and I, I essentially agree with that, so long as the primary structure is owner occupied. I think that's a real important component of this.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, and then Alderman Fleming.
So I was going to move on to the next thing. So if anybody wanted to talk about this one, I wouldn't want to.
So do you have a point on this one? And then, and then I want to make sure there's a general vote to move this on to Plan Commission. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah. So I, I also could move it to Plan Commission. However, I know we'll bring it back, but I do support Alderman Ruth Simmons. I would like us to have a further discussion about, maybe not a required rent control, but some kind of incentive so the people who have these can think about renting them as affordable, however that's defined. And my issue with the amnesty, I, again, we can talk about this later, but I have a, I guess I object to the, allowing the amnesty for people who constructed the units without permits. Because I, I understand if they've been there and you're renting them to whoever, and now you're coming forward. But if we're talking about people who constructed them, well, that's what's in the memo, says for amnesty, for ADUs constructed without building permits. And so I just want to clarify that, because if someone else, you know, builds something without a building permit and we find out, I don't think we're offering them amnesty. So I'm okay with the amnesty for bringing it on the rental market and, and inspection, but not if you've built it and, and then are renting it.
Okay. So I think this has been a good discussion on accessory dwell, dwelling units.
So I would, I would move that we advance this to the Plan Commission, or send it to the Plan Commission.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then ask the Plan Commission to, to see the conversation here tonight. Okay. Terrific. Let's move on to SP three. Alderman Wilson?
Okay. Let's make sure I got my order correct here. SP three. I think you did a pretty good job walking through it. I've gotten a little bit of feedback. There seemed to be some confusion, as you said, on the, on the idea of loan versus grant. But I generally agree with the idea that there has to be some sort of assurance that if we're going to put money into the project, that it does continue to be used for the intended purpose. So I like that. I guess the only thing I have, I want to make sure we are doing in the process is working with the landlord. with the landlords to make sure that this will actually help them. So I'm, I'm assuming 60% AMI is going to hit the target, but if it's not going to hit the target, I've heard from some people that, you know, maybe we need to be more flexible on that, okay?
Just to note, it can be up to 60. If they're below that, that's fine. Tina knows well from working with, people with Housing Choice vouchers are always below three, always below 50%, and frequently when they first get a voucher, they're below 30%. So that really does cover pretty much anybody who is coming with some kind of rental subsidy and assistance through the voucher program, through our TIBR program. Our TIBR program, most people come in at or below 30%, and we get them up to 50 or 60% before we, you know, so.
All right, and, and again, it's, it's in the memo, but if you quote, borrow the money, you keep your units in the program compliant, at the end of the term, you would not have to pay it back.
Right.
Right, okay. Right, so it's, it is a forgivable loan. I'd kind of like to try it. It looks like it's structured on a, like a one-year basis, but make this kind of a trial basis and see how it works or not works. When, when putting this together, did you work with any of the landlords? Like, did we, did we talk to them and kind of get their input as the numbers were fleshed out?
We did not have an opportunity to do that. What we were basing it on was the storefront modernization program as directed, which is that $50,000 cap. Many of the things, and from experience with our housing rehab program for CDBG, $50,000 is our cap on that program, because it really has proven to be pretty effective for most needs. But the other thing that we have done there is when there have been, and there have been a few, where somebody's project could require going over the limit, over that limit, we have actually, in that case, we've brought cases to the Housing and Community Development Act Committee for review. We had a, one I remember where somebody had to have those pilings driven down to stabilize her house, and the bid was, well, it's this much up to 30 feet, and then it's X per foot longer. And so we had to get the committee to say, if we went over, we could do just that work to make sure that her house was actually going to be livable.
Let me ask this question. Let's say somebody gets into a unit, and they don't have a job, and they go out and they find a job, okay, they're obviously not going to get kicked out of the unit. But that would probably put the landlord out of compliance if they, if they shifted outside the AMI range.
Nobody gets kicked out during the year they have their lease.
No, but I mean, as far as the landlord's compliance is concerned, though. So they, in other words, you know, they move in, the next, you know, three weeks later, they get a nice job, and they stay, but they've now leased the unit to somebody who is not compliant for the AMI.
We would make sure that if somebody leases up at the appropriate level and they gain income, that's not a bad thing.
Sure.
And then at the next rent-up, usually what we were recommending is that people's income can float up to 80% of the median without saying it's now time that you need to move on. We can look at those levels, but I, that's pretty much what's been used in a number of other programs to make sure that people have the ability to improve their situation without being immediately penalized for it, but then when they have the capacity to move on to a non-subsidized unit, that they do.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I follow up on that.
Alderman, when?
Well, I think, I think what Alderman Wilson is, is asking, and I, and I would like to know this to it, I'm not sure whether this is what you're asking, but if it doesn't make the, so for instance, in his, using his example, a renter doesn't have a job or at the, at their income level when they sign the lease, the landlord then would be complying with the program, and then they get another job, they, their income increases, but does that, that, the landlord doesn't lose a year of affordability, correct?
No, no, if, if the person's, if that happens, that they're still, they were eligible when they got in, at lease-up, they may have to end up moving, though.
Okay, so the landlord, landlord doesn't lose a year towards the forgivable loan?
No, they're not penalized for having a tenant who actually betters him or herself, yeah.
All right, good, thank you.
I don't, I don't know that that's in the program guidelines, though.
No, I don't.
Okay, well, we can make sure that those details are put in there.
Okay.
Yeah, it isn't in the program.
We wouldn't do anything to have somebody penalized for a lease that they entered in good faith to help somebody.
Yeah.
We will make sure that's added.
Thank you, Alderman Saffron.
I just want to make sure I understand, this is a rebate, so if I do a $50,000 project, I go into my pocket for $50,000 and then get paid back $50,000 by the city incrementally, or all at once? How, how is that?
It's paid back as a lump sum.
Okay.
And it's, it's a 50/50 cost sharing, basically. The landlord puts in, this is the way the storefront program is.
So it'll be a $100,000 project, and I would get $50,000 from the city after it's completed and I've paid the $100,000 to the contractor?
Right, and, and there are cases where you could have a multi-unit building that is, you know, I doubt very much that anyone would want that kind of investment in a single unit, but, you know.
Okay, so then if I meet all the affordability guidelines for 15 years, I never pay any interest or repay the loan?
Correct.
Okay, and that's, that's unacceptable?
It's unacceptable because if I pay money, if I pay $50,000, why do I need you? I need the money now to do the work, not go to, give some money and then you pay me back, that's ridiculous. Why would I, why would I pay $50,000 for the improvements I need to the building and then come to the city and say, give me some money back? If I need, if I'm going to pay for the repairs on my own, why do I need you? Why do I need you? I need the money now to do the repairs.
All right, thank you, thank you, Tina. Okay, let's see, so next, next up is Alderman Rainey.
No, I'm.
You don't have any comments? Okay. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
And I may be overlooking it, but is the dollar amount attached to a amount of units or the building?
A building.
The building. Should we consider it being per unit and then?
We could. It's, you know, there are many ways in the CDBG program, for example, in a single family or a owner-occupied two-flat, it's up to $50,000. That, they don't have to do any matching, and that actually, that program exists, and people can get a loan, and in that case, it is a loan, but it is, in many cases, deferred, and no payments are due until they sell the property. So we were following direction to look at the storefront modernization program as an alternative, because that was perceived as being more desirable. And if that's not working, we can take direction from the council and come back with other options, if that would be.
Then also, the five-year affordability term, I don't know that I agree with that. I would like to see more of an investment in the property owner for affordable housing than five years to support them in that way.
We were tying it to the amount of the loan, of, of the forgivable loan. It could be all kept at the same amount, but that's why we had staggered it. So up to $10,000 would be a five-year forgivable, up to 15, up to 25, excuse me, would be a 10-year forgivable period, and then up to 50 would be a 15-year.
I would like to discuss that further, the five years. For me, it's not enough of a commitment for an affordable unit for us to participate. And then in terms of the modeling it after the storefront modernization, the landlords that kind of are on my mind as we're exploring this, front funding that 50%, 50% match is a, is a real barrier. So is there any way that the match piece, we can manage it how we would do the rehab loan? Where is, are the contractors paid directly by the city on the rehab loans?
The, in, in the CDBG rehab program, the project is managed completely by the housing rehab specialist, and the contractors are paid directly. That is a loan, and all of those landlords, I think Ms. Payden and Mr. Sutton are eligible for that program if they would like to participate in it. It offers differences in that, you know, it is, we fund those projects by having the loans ultimately repaid, but as I said, many, many times they're deferred. But there is no payment required by the landlord in that case, and the incomes are up to 80% of area median.
So I understand that program, but for this one that we're talking about now, is that, is there any reason why we couldn't consider the 50% match being managed by the city, so that they aren't front-funding that? Because that's, that's why we're already having this discussion, because they need repairs today.
We could make any of those things at, at council's direction a consideration, and restructure the program accordingly.
Thank you, Alderman Ruth Simmons. Alderman Fleming?
So a couple of thoughts. I also think that we should look at increasing the five years. I think if we're going to make, you know, a commitment, we want to make sure housing is available. The other issue is, this is the issue I have with the storefront modernization program, is that there is no cap on it, if I'm correct? And so individuals can come in, I mean, there's a monetary cap, but individuals can come in and apply for storefront funding for various projects. Is that correct? And so I would like to think about, in order to make this program a little more longstanding, trying to make a cap. So if you have, like Ms. Payden has, however many properties, or whoever else, that there is some kind of cap, whether it's a dollar amount cap, there's a unit number cap, because ideally, I would like this program to attract landlords who maybe are not currently renting under their affordable housing model, to know that this funding is available, and maybe turn some of those units over. And so I would like to, I guess I would propose a cap per, per owner, and we can look at a funding cap per owner. So this, this, look at continuous pot of money, you know, for any home improvement projects. And I think it's a, you know, I think it's a great start, as the speaker spoke about. I mean, nothing that we're going to do tonight is perfect and going to solve our problems, you know, tomorrow, but I think this is a great start. And so I would hope that, you know, kind of some frustration around this program proposal, although it's not final, is that people understand there's a give and take here. So we have city funds that taxpayers, you know, give us, we have to be very diligent about. And so this is one way of which we're trying to help, get some affordable housing on the market. You know, maybe it's not perfect for everybody, but I think given Alderman Simmons' suggestion, if there's a way we can get some of this money out front, with the landlord understanding that they are responsible for the 50%, to, we don't want to have work kind of half-completed. You know, the people would just be flexible to understand this is a starting point for us. It's the same thing we do with businesses. I own a home that might need a roof, I can't qualify for this type of loan, so I think it has to be a give and take here, hopefully by the community.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. And Alderman Ruth Simmons and Alderman Fleming, your points are well taken as far as the timing is concerned. If you're going to apply for this, obviously you want to know if you're going to qualify and get the money before you do the outlay, right? So if you, okay, I'm going to put my $100,000 out, oh, but there was some sort of technicality and I don't get the other 50, that would really hurt. So I recognize that we told you to do it the other way, but in discussing it, that's probably not the ideal way to have directed you. So I think we're in a neighborhood, you know, on, on how this could look, but it looks like we just need some of these logistics pieces fleshed out a little bit more and a little bit differently. Do you feel like you've gotten?
I think, I think, let me see if I've got this, and you can tell me. Look at longer affordability periods even for small amounts, relatively small amounts of funding.
And on that, you know, I don't, like, for $10,000, we'll write a check for $300,000 for one unit, or a couple hundred thousand dollars for one unit. So for $10,000, I, I like the tiered system, I do like this tiered system. And, you know, we've put really big dollar amounts into the single units, so I'm not uncomfortable with, you know, that shorter time period for a much, 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 much smaller amount of money. So, so that's kind of how I feel about that. But, okay, go ahead.
And what I'm hearing is, instead of having the landlord pay upfront and get the rebate or get the payment, be able to pay them, either them immediately, so they can pay the contractor or work out some arrangement where the 50% part being paid by the city would be paid right away, and so they don't have to pay and then get reimbursed.
Right.
Is that correct?
Like, apply and get, you know, approved upfront.
Right, and that would have to be done, and that is done in the, in the storefront modernization. They have to get their bids, and those have to be looked at. So I'm sure there's a way that that can be worked out.
Okay. Alderman Rainey?
I'd like to propose a different approach. And that approach would be that there'd be no 50/50 on this program, the Landlord Rehabilitation Assistance Program. And that would be, we would make available with no 50/50, and it, it would be a $5,000 per unit rehab program. And for, for projects that are larger, that you would have to apply for the program that is a fabulous program that we already have in place, and that is the CDBG rehab program. There is, you can get a lot of money there, and I don't understand what the problem is with building owners applying for that. It's a few pages of paperwork, but it's a program we have in place, and there are owners that have renovated their entire buildings with that money. And we have evidence of that, and people who can testify to that, that have had those buildings for years. Is that not true? And I don't know if we're not doing a good job promoting those, but landlords, if, if we do the program like I would like, can line up tomorrow, if we pass it, and get $5,000 per unit to renovate whatever they come in and get approved for, and you can do some serious work with $5,000. You know, you can get a new toilet, a new sink, you can, you know, paint the whole place if you've got painters, you know, in your family. And I just think, I understand the business with not wanting to pay 5,000 to get 5,000. And I, you know, I don't think this program should put roofs on, on Tina's building at the corner of Darrow and Dewey and Howard. I mean, that's, that's not what this should be for. This should be for helping to renovate or put a new floor in the units, you know, that she has there. But the CDBG program is a program that helps create decent affordable housing. And we have a program already in place, there's no need to recreate the wheel. And we don't have a lot of applicants for that program, do we?
It's primarily owner-occupied, single-family homes.
But we do have, it's, the program is available for?
Absolutely.
Yes, and we're just not getting those applicants. So could you tell the council about that program?
Sure.
It is. There is money available?
There is. We could, I mean, we usually have someplace between $150,000 and $200,000 that we use each year. So if we got a lot of applicants, we could run out. One of the challenges where we do run into with CDBG is if it is a building that has eight or more units, then they get subject to Davis Bacon, which is one of the headaches of the world. And that is possibly a cost increase, but many of our rental buildings are not eight units, and it, CDBG is given in the form of a loan. They are either, they're zero-interest loans, and basically what we do is we do a cash flow analysis. If you can't afford to pay debt service, you get a deferred loan, and it just sits there, you don't have to pay it back till you sell the property.
Or title transfer?
Yeah, I mean, that's, deferred is a title transfer, yeah.
Okay. Thank, thank, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
So I disagree. I think that we shouldn't use this fund for cosmetic, for, you know, new finishes, paint and floors. I think that it should be more for major property standard issues and quality of living improvement, so roofs and plumbing, mechanical work, any sort of structural issues that would keep the landlord from being compliant with any sort of rental inspection with whoever, whatever housing authority they're working with, or property standard. property standard issues with the city of Evanston. And then in terms of the, the, I don't remember what Alderman Wilson, what direction he gave you.
He was saying with smaller loans, have the, have the staggered, the different time frames for the different?
Oh, so I, I want to stand firm on not having a five-year option for, and just talking that through. Like, I think that if someone is saying that they're committed to affordable housing, then certainly they should be committed beyond five years. So I want to, I want to have that open for discussion further.
I do think that one of the things that, and we haven't gotten into some of the details of this, but one of the things that we would look at when people are making recommenda, you know, when they're saying what they're going to do, is what we do with our program. If they're replacing a roof, we make sure that it's a certain level of quality of roof. I believe we're going for 20-year. I can't remember off the top of my head, but there's a, you know, minimal standard, there's a standard so that any systems are going to last. We also, I think, and I've talked to Kumar Jensen about this a bit, with HUD, we are required to use energy efficient furnaces and all that sort of things. And I think that those requirements should, they're common sense, both for the building and for the, you know, effectiveness, the cost effectiveness to the landlords. So I think those things, we can write out those sorts of details in the program, if you agree that that should be done.
Thank you. Alderman Ravel?
A question and a comment. So for the CDBG program, does the building have to be, isn't there a part of Evanston where the building has to be?
No. Housing is based on the income of the people living in the unit, not where it's actually located.
Okay, okay. Well, that clears that. But I guess I agree with Alderman Ru Simmons, though, that I'd like to see this money go to helping landlords with doing the kinds of rehab to really be able to maintain their property. So I like the list that you have in this draft about code violations and life safety needs and the energy and resource conservation. I'm hopeful, though, something like lead paint removal and asbestos removal and those kinds of things would be, would qualify as well.
Absolutely. Asbestos has to be dealt with. With lead paint, we, that's a requirement for any HUD loans. So, and even if it's not HUD money, we would require that all contractors have their RRP certification and lead safe practices are followed. That's actually a requirement by the EPA nationally, so it's supposed to be happening.
Great. Thank you. Alderman Fleming? Then we'll go to Alderman Wilson.
I just wanted to make sure, maybe, Sarah, did you not, did you finish your list of direction that you were given? I wanted to just make sure we didn't leave off my suggestion that we cap it per owner, the number of times an owner can apply.
I will add that.
Thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
And I'm struggling a little bit with the timeframe part of it. I think that one of the things I was, I was considering was the idea that, I think we want more people to try this out that maybe aren't doing it. And a landlord, you, anybody goes into business to make a living, right? You want to make money and do this. But maybe somebody's not willing to make a commitment to, okay, I'm going to commit to trying this for 10 years and maybe it'll work out. So I think just the idea of having the option, and again, it's just for the smaller, it's for the smaller amounts, but if we can get more people to try it out and say, okay, yeah, this works. I can, you know, I've made this commitment for five years. Maybe they're not, you know, comfortable going with a 10-year commitment. But just to get more people into it and realizing that, yeah, I can do this and make a living, hopefully, and, you know, but maybe not have to make the 10-year commitment.
Okay. Well, we've had a lot of discussions, certainly, about SP3. This is an item that is for action. Would anyone like to move in action here?
So moved?
Well, we got to know what the action would move.
I'm going to.
You're moving the whole thing?
I'll move the whole thing to staff. I mean, Sarah has a, probably a nice page or two of notes to take all the notes into consideration and bring it back at our next available meeting to where we can actually present it and pass it.
Perhaps it could come back to AMPW?
Let's have City Manager chime in at this point.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a couple of things. So I think the desire, we've gotten lots of good feedback, so we will go back and chew on that. But we can come back to you, probably, today is the 29th of January, come back to you perhaps on the 26th of February. Would you like this Administration of Public Works? I think that's where this started, or was it Planning and Development?
AMPW.
AMPW. So we would be prepared, so perhaps an appropriate motion would be to take input and refer this back to AMPW for further discussion on the 26th of February. My concern, though, is that I, in listening to the discussion, there are some contradictory issues out on the table. And Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want us just to kind of take those contradictory issues and bring them back to AMPW for further discussion. I think there's issues regarding timeframe. There's issues regarding type of improvement that would be covered, and I don't think that there's consensus. So we can either come back with various scenarios for February 26th, or if you'd like to spend some additional time this evening talking about it.
I mean, we could put, I mean, Alderman Rainey, you know, basically, they proposed, you know, modification or a different type, different type of program. We could put that to a vote, right?
See, what I'm wondering is, is there a maximum, can we just clarify a few things for me? Is there a maximum, were you recommending a maximum per building, or, I was trying to see what would be the total a building could get?
$50,000 from the city.
So what I was thinking was, so let's say it's a 10-unit building. I said 5,000 a unit. That would equal 50,000. Everybody's going, oh, no, I don't want 5,000 a year. So that would still be the same.
Sure, but they could use it in one unit or on?
Right, right, they would. And in your scenario, it would be 50,000 for the owner to pay and 50,000, it would be, would really be 100,000 renovation, right?
Could go up to that.
It's a cost, it's a 50-50 cost share, basically.
50 would be a 50-50. But in my, in my way, it would just be a 50,000 renovation and we would pay for the whole thing. Right, okay. So, so it would be 50,000 match. Okay.
Is that clear?
Clear as mud.
Well, I know what we've discussed. I just don't know which is the direction.
Yeah. Okay, so that's.
Alderman Fleming?
Sorry, I forgot another thing, and this maybe is cover, but just, would we use this for people who are renting a room in their house?
No, this would only be if they are having leases with somebody. This would be.
Yeah, but I mean, you could rent, we have people in general assistance who have a lease, but they're renting a room.
As the owner.
No, I mean.
No, but I mean, the owner of the home, who might be renting two rooms. Everybody's like, no one.
More like a home sharing thing?
Yes, but they would have a lease.
You're talking multi-family buildings only, right?
Yeah, I mean, what we were talking about was each tenant household has its own unit, not a home sharing type situation.
Okay, well, I guess I don't want to propose that, but I guess those are people who are landlords who are providing affordable housing in the city.
Actually, people who are doing home sharing are eligible for the CDBG program, too, as long as the home sharing income doesn't put them over the 80% of area median, which it rarely does. I mean, that's, we've done that for years. There are cases where people are renting to, a room to somebody. And in many cases, those individual owner occupants benefit from having the housing rehab specialist work with them and manage the project for them.
Thank you, Sarah. Alderman win?
Yes. I, I do think that we, we benefit more by doing the matching, the matching dollars, where the city would kick in up to $50,000 and then the landlord would use $50,000. I think that there, it's very easy to, even doing, bringing something up to code, to spend $10,000. So I would rather we get the benefit of our contributing and get repairs up to $100,000 on some units. I think that really would incentivize landlords to come forward. You know, if they have a $25,000 repair than, or, you know, a $50,000 repair, they get half of it paid for if they comply with this. So I would prefer that we keep it at this, what you're proposing, so that we, we are able to spend more of the dollars and possibly attract more, more people to it. I mean, if they want to apply for a smaller amount, that's fine. But if you have a larger amount that might be undoable, you know, let's say you have a $70,000 project. Well, if we cap it at 50, then, you know, that's not workable. And, you know, a $70,000 project is, you know, there, there are oodles of them all over the city. So I would prefer that we keep it at the 50-50 matching program.
I would just add to that, Alderman, from my experience working around the country in different grant programs and stuff, it's always, in my experience, always a better program when somebody has skin in the game. Okay? I've seen programs where it's 100% and somebody doesn't have ownership, because, hey, I'm not putting any money into it, and it never, it doesn't end well for somebody. And so.
Alderman Wilson?
And I agree with that. I do look at this as, I'm kind of picturing this as a pilot program or a test project. So I, my inclination is to do this for a year and see how it works and then regroup and make adjustments. I think, I'm trying to remember, the only non-agreement point I can, I can remember is Alderman Simmons and I maybe don't agree on, and maybe some others don't agree on the tiered system. Was there another point that was, there was lack of consensus?
Improvements, maybe. So if we could model it after the rehabilitation qualifications for improvements.
We can certainly put more language into the description of what we would recommend having as the eligible costs.
And maybe for the, for the tiered thing, maybe just leave that, I guess, a little gray for today. But you know, you're in contact with some landlords, maybe get together with some of the landlords and just see how the logistics of that would work. I mean, maybe the $10,000 with the five-year thing is just of no use to them. I don't know. Maybe I'm overly optimistic. But perhaps they can talk to the landlords and just kind of get a sense of, you know, logistics-wise, what would actually be functional and useful for them in making these types of improvements. Does that sound okay?
No.
Okay, why not? I mean, I guess just so I understand what you're thinking.
Well, just because we have a community of landlords that are, that are already committed to doing this work. They've already, they are struggling to maintain units. They're, they're all over the fifth ward now. So there's an opportunity for them to get some relief and give their families that they're supporting, like, nice improvements right now. So I really didn't have in mind identifying new landlords necessarily to come to support this program. This is a current need that we have right now. And so there are families that are living all over the city, not just in, in the fifth ward, that, that are living in houses with, like, leaking roofs and just underperforming plumbing systems and so on, and their landlord owners can't afford the improvements. They can't afford to pass along that expense to the family, and they're just stuck living.
I agree. I didn't eloquently say what I was thinking. When I said, you know, landlords that are not, I'm talking about the landlords, to Alderman Rainey's point, that aren't going out and getting the CDBG money, but landlords who are doing this and providing this service already. But to let them know that we can help you and you can, you can make a living doing it. So the landlords are probably, they're struggling, right? They don't have quite enough money to make the improvements that need to be made, but if we make this available, and it's, you know, again, 50-50, skin in the game, but it's these landlords that are doing it now, but they're not participating in what we have to offer. So when I said new landlords, that's what I meant. I don't mean, like, let's go, you know, put an ad on Craigslist and say, okay, find new landlords. I want the people who are out there doing this to decide to come in and ask for this assistance. Okay.
Alderman, Alderman win. And then I'm going to go to Alderman Rainey.
But Alderman Ru Simmons, can you explain a little bit more about the thinking of not having it, having it be a longer term than the five-year affordability for the $10,000 loan?
Well, I just want to see more of a commitment than five years, like a trial. I might want to dibble and dabble in the affordable housing market as a business model. Like, I want to see someone that has been committed to it or is committed to it, and we are subsidizing that opportunity to provide the housing, but not necessarily presenting it as a new business model to explore.
Now I understand. Okay, I've gotten that now.
And that's not really what I was getting, I guess what I was getting at is, to your point, the landlord who is just barely getting by, and they might want to take advantage of this, but if they look at that and they say, oh, wow, 10 years, I just can't commit to 10 years. I can't risk the possibility of having to pay that whole big chunk back. But I could commit to five, just to, you know, see if I can make it another five years. That's, that's just what my thinking is.
Well, maybe they're not the ideal candidate for this program.
They might not be.
Because if they're going to income qualify their tenants, then they're already going to, if they, if they're paying market, if their tenants are paying market rent, then, I mean, the way that I look at it is, just doesn't make sense for everyone. I mean, it's not for every landlord.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Rainey.
If, if these are small landlords who have single-family homes that are renting to people as affordable housing, why don't we pull them all together and have, when was the last time we had a meeting for small landlords to tell them about the housing rehab program? That's what we should do. We should have them all in, like, 10 landlords who have small units, and tell them about the affordable housing rehab program. It would be perfect for them. They don't have to, they don't have to pay back anything. They can, they can have the entire house renovated.
Alderman.
New heating, new air conditioning, new roof, new plumbing. I mean, why not do that?
Did you want to go, Alderman Ru Simmons, or?
So we probably should convene that group, but we also should be looking at ways that we can support them.
That is supporting them.
So I, I don't know that, what are the terms for CDB, what are the minimum and maximums in terms of units and?
Well, the maximum amount for a single-family unit or a two-flat is $50,000. Excuse me. And then with multi-units over that, it's $20,000 per unit. So if you had a four-unit building, you could get $80,000.
So it's underutilized. Why? The compliance is a problem? What, why, how did we get here? If we have this money and we have a need and?
I think there is a real issue with smaller landlords who don't do income qualifications and aren't familiar with that process, who are reluctant to take on that responsibility. We do a lot of owner occupied two-flats because we're income qualifying the owner in many cases, so we are helping them stay in their, in their property. But I think that perhaps the, one of the issues is, are they able to do any qualification on their own? Of course, like Ms. Peyton, they can also accept voucher holders because those are income-qualified by the organizations, which really makes it very easy. And one of the things we are trying to do is get more and more landlords to be willing to take people with subsidies. It's not something that, it's a source of income protection against discrimination, but at the same time, it's, you know, there are a lot of other reasons people can use that make them not take voucher holders. So that's one of the things that I think when, when landlords have felt they have to do their own income qualification, it has been a barrier to some of them in the past.
It also used to be back in the day, people used to think we were trying to take their houses. Remember?
Yes.
We're not trying to take their houses. And they now know that.
This is a grant. The CDBG is a grant. It's this.
It's a loan. It has to be repaid eventually, but only when they sell the property or are not keeping it as affordable housing.
So this is the same as the rehab, the rehabilitation loan?
It is.
It is the rehab program, yeah.
Okay, so that, so that's where we're back, that's what the issue is. They, they don't want it to be. They don't want it to be a loan. And so if we're doing a grant then for storefront modernization, so that, I would like to continue this discussion so that we, I want to move it forward. There was some confusion. I'm clear now that I want to continue moving forward, looking at this as a grant option. I'm okay with it being a matching grant. But if we could continue to discuss the term and also make sure that we are clear on the improvements that are qualified. So I don't know. How can we move this forward?
All right. Let's, we do need to move it forward because we have several other items on this agenda. I have a couple lights. So anything that you want to add to SB3? Alderman Fleming?
Yep. So I do want to, again, support what Alderman, almost got her finale, that was...
You went away there.
Yeah, I was like, what's her name? Alderman Ru Simmons said, I think that we need to have a commitment from the person who is getting the money, that they are going to keep the unit affordable. I think if we start talking about, you know, even if it is a pilot, we start about one year or whatever, someone out there will say, oh, I'm gonna go for it with this and remodel whatever in one year, and then I'm done. Or, you know, I'm gonna sell my place and then I'm done. I don't want to set up any kind of idea that people think they might come and get this money and do whatever, and they don't have to keep the unit affordable. So I think five years is a very small amount of time for $10,000. I mean, maybe I'll put my kids out and rent out some space and get my own rehab. But I think we have to, they have to, as the mayor said, they have to have some skin in the game. And I think past the finance, that also is a commitment to keep the unit on the market as affordable. I don't know how we do the storefront, all the details of that, but I do, again, want to make sure that there's a cap on this. I don't like that the storefront is kind of a repeat pot of money. And I think people can do...
Alderman Fleming, there is a cap on the number of times that you can apply for storefront.
Oh, great. Perfect. So I think that we want to make sure all that's replicated. I think Alderman Rainey brings up a good point about having the landlords together, and we can tell them about all the program options, whether it's a loan or a grant. I imagine most people don't apply because they don't want the loan. But that is an option for bigger projects that they should know about, and we should be very, you know, mindful of this program being something different. But they have to make that commitment. I also will stand very firm. I think five years is not a lot of time. If you don't want to do it for five years, then don't apply for the program.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. I was just going to attempt to move this forward, and I was looking to Sarah to see if she, I think after the city manager made his comments, we sort of just continued to recycle the same issues. Do you feel like you have enough to go on?
I think we have, in some cases, two directions, and maybe we could bring back, I mean, we can bring back if there are any questions or options that can be discussed.
But I mean, if it comes back to APW, maybe just option A, option B.
Right.
And then we can discuss it at a smaller committee level and then bring it back to council.
Right. I believe we can write more specific program guidelines and things like that, and then obviously the council can continue to discuss length of affordability periods and things like that.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
And I guess I just had one more statement, sorry, to cut you off.
Just trying to move it forward, like you asked.
Yeah, just in the spirit of moving it forward, I want to pick up on the conversation with Alderman Rainey and Alderman Ru Simmons. I also believe, I think, it would be an excellent idea to bring our landlords together after we've sort of flushed through these details. And I think this is what they're saying. And when we bring them together, I mean, it sounds like we have a few options in terms of funding, so I don't necessarily, I'm not saying this is what I heard, but it shouldn't be phrases of this or that, but just sort of an "too." So now we have the rehab program that has been, the CBDG that has always been out there. Now would be an excellent time to remind people of the two different funding mechanisms.
Okay.
Just so we don't lose sight of that.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson.
Okay. And Alderman Ru Simmons and Alderman Fleming have persuaded me that we should focus on, if we're, again, doing this on a trial basis, focus on the ones who are making that long-term investment and commitment as the priority. So I, okay. One less issue, so hopefully that gives you no more points of contention.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Rainey, do you want to keep it going or...
Yes. The point I want to make finally is to Alderman Simmons, and to follow up on Alderman Wilson, these are long-term investors, these small homeowners who rent out the properties. They are long-term investors. And as a matter of fact, the loans that they take out for rehabilitation, that are loans that are due when the title transfers, their titles generally transfer when they die. And that is when the title transfers. So they never actually sell their property. So it is as though they never have to pay back. Maybe some relative does, but they don't. And it is an investment, and their property, their property increases in value because they take out this rehabilitation loan. So I'm just telling you.
Great. Thank you.
The best deal, it's the best deal in town, so.
So terrific. I think we've had a great conversation about SB3, the Pilot Landlord Rehabilitation Assistance Program, the...
So is our motion to move it to APW with the direction we gave?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. SB3 is going to go back to staff and then to APW. Okay, SB4, let's move on to that rooming house research. This is for a discussion. There was a white paper that was put together. Let's start off with you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is from the map. Sarah or Johanna?
Actually, I'm going to get Savannah up here on this one because she's the one who did all the research.
So Savannah, actually, how many of those properties identified on the map are actually licensed rooming houses?
Hello, Alderman Fisk. Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, City Manager Bob Quitt, members of the City Council, I'm Savannah Clement. To answer your question, all of those are registered rooming houses, but they vary in what they actually are. Our hotels are registered as rooming houses. As Sarah mentioned earlier, the YMCA and the YWCA are registered as rooming houses. And then many of them are smaller, single-family home-type structures that rent by the room to Northwestern. And a lot of them are actually dormitories and sorority and fraternity houses as well.
Okay. And 319 Dempster, the IHO is also considered a rooming house?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right. I thought, okay. And we're talking about licensing.
Yes, they are registered as a rooming house with our Property Standards Department.
Right. So they're licensed. Okay. And licensing for rooming houses, as I understand it, means inspections twice a year?
Yeah. I don't know the exact answer to that, but we can find out for you.
I was talking to one of the owners of a licensed rooming house in my ward, and she reports inspections twice a year, standards that have to be met in terms of safety. And my bringing this up is a way to address problems that we have, not only in my ward, but also Alderman Simmons and I share concerns, both in the first and fifth wards, about inspections, number of people living in units and in houses, and basically, the safety issues associated with that. Rooming houses that are owner-occupied are, you have someone there all the time that has an invested interest in not only maintaining the house, but also maintaining the compatibility of the use with the rest of the neighborhood and who is accountable. And I think that in this climate, it could actually work, not only for student housing, but also aging in place. And I've had a lot of inquiries about that as well. So I want to make people more aware of that, and our staff is a resource, and figure out how we can do that. Because I don't think, we've had some discussion in the past about raising the number of unrelated persons from three to four. That's not going to work in the neighborhood that I'm most familiar with. It would actually mean that a three-flat, a single-family house, for example, that's converted to a three-flat instead of nine people in that house, you could have a dozen without, with inspections maybe once every other year. So I'm trying to get a little bit more inspections, safety, ownership, and compatibility with neighborhood. Not only to make a neighborhood more enjoyable, but also protect the property values and protect the sense to surrounding neighbors that there's someone there who is accountable for the property. So that's, that was my reasoning for doing this, and I'd like to hear from my colleagues on the council.
Great. Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Rainey?
I'm sure rooming houses are very nice and friendly and if everything's going, fine. But there's absolutely no protection for tenants that live in rooming houses. The landlord-tenant ordinance does not apply. You can be locked out if you don't pay your rent exactly when you should. If the rooming house person doesn't like you, you can be thrown out. There are no protections for anybody who lives in a rooming house. So if everything's going fine, and you get your breakfast and everything, you know, it's fine. But you can be, your lock can be plugged, you can be thrown out, there's no protection. I don't even, I don't even know about public accommodation laws, but you're not protected. So for that reason, I don't like them. I don't like them for that reason. And I want to say something to you, too. The young woman who spoke about changing the law to four people, how ridiculous is it to think that two people in a bedroom in a two-bedroom house is outrageous and is going to destroy a neighborhood? It just isn't going to, Judy. It just, Alderman Fisk, it's just not going to do it. And we really have to start thinking about that. I'm a tenant. I rattle around in a huge three-bedroom apartment. There is no reason why four people can't be living in my apartment. I don't want them, but it, there's absolutely, there's absolutely no reason why four unrelated people cannot be living in my apartment. None whatsoever. And there's no reason why four unrelated people can't be living in your, on your street. It does not, it does not mean there's going to be parties and screaming. There's no reason for it. And we need to change the law. I mean, I think changing the law from three to four is silly. We have a law that regulates the number of people per square foot. That's what we should go to. That's, there should not be four unrelated people in 250-foot studio. That should not be allowed. And it isn't allowed. But in a five-bedroom house, there should be probably six, seven, eight unrelated people. But there's just no reason why we can't have the number of people per square foot that our city allows. And we need to, we need to put on our big-girl pants and allow that. There is, I'm sorry, you have no basis to stand on that ruling any longer. You can have all, you can have all the bed and, you can have, not bed and breakfast, you can have...
I wouldn't go there.
You can have all these things that you want, but we have got, we have got to come into this century, and we have got to change that law. That is, that is just, that is just unconscionable to continue that law. You should not have children living in the basement where there's a furnace. That is, that has got to go. I'm with you on dividing bedrooms up, but we have got to allow the number of people allowed per bedroom where the square footage per person is allowed. We have got to allow that.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Got a lot of lights up here. A lot of people want to participate in this conversation. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. And...
Stop, Rainey. We have to allow it.
I completely agree with Alderman Rainey. And I think a couple months ago, I suggested that we just completely repeal the three-unrelated ordinance. And I think that's, that's really what we should do. I did, after I made that suggestion, I heard from a number of people with reasons why that's a horrible idea. But frankly, the reasons are, to your point, these are all things that are covered by the building code. They are all covered by our density restrictions. We spent an awful lot of time developing and codifying a nuisance premises ordinance, which I think we did a good job on. This antiquated rule, it only serves to presuppose that people are going to engage in bad conduct because they're not related. Okay? That's all it does. And it gets, it focuses on the Northwestern students, obviously. But it provides a bad landlord or a bad property owner with an opportunity to take advantage of somebody. And I don't want to allow that on my watch. We've talked, some landlords have talked about immigrants, refugees, people in those categories. These are the kinds of people. We passed a sanctuary city ordinance, okay? So we...
Welcoming city.
Well, I'm sorry, welcoming, you're correct. Welcoming city ordinance. But this isn't a welcoming provision in our code. So I agree, it's antiquated, and I think, you know, and I spent actually hours and hours and hours and hours of time with Alderman Fisk, people in your neighborhood, meeting in your neighborhood, with representatives from student government, from people who probably graduated three years ago, but an awfully long time trying to work up something that was going to be acceptable to people. And it got more and more complicated, and the students were like, okay, we could kind of, we could live with this. But you know what? It was really complicated and convoluted, and it would be difficult for the staff to enforce. But at the end of the day, if there's a huge rally, raucous party, the police come and break up the party. That's what it's really about. If there are, you know, six people living in a bedroom in bunk beds, that's a different problem, and that's against the building code. But this ordinance has had its day in the sun, and it's time to put it to, put it to rest.
Thank you, Alderman. Okay. Alderman Fisk?
Well, obviously, I couldn't disagree more. And I'm quite certain that we could amend our landlord-tenant ordinance to include folks in rooming houses. The, we have had very strong success in my ward with licensed rooming houses. And these are, in effect, shared houses where people use the kitchen, use the house as though it was their own, more than three unrelated people living in. But the point is that they, there is an owner in that house. And that is extremely helpful in making, making those types of uses more compatible with the neighborhood. I don't see this as so much of a student issue. I see this as a way for people to share a house in, in a positive, in a positive way. And I think amending the ordinance is probably a good idea. Alderman Wilson, for all the good things that you've done and all the people that you've talked to, we did try to set up a committee with you, and I don't think that committee ever met. So the folks I've talked to, I checked with them, and they said that, for whatever reason, that never happened. But I thank you for coming to my ward and listening to the residents who live there, who are concerned about what is happening on their street when developers come in and they buy a single-family house, and suddenly it's a three-apartment building, and there are nine people living in there without any, anyone who is any landlord present. And to say that now the responsibility is on their shoulders to monitor the use of the building, all the resulting activities, whatever they are, I think is really unfair. And again, I'm trying to find a middle ground here. And I think that the rooming house concept is something that's fair to developers, it's fair to the renters, and it's fair to the neighbors. And for anyone to attack this is outmoded, and you need to come and listen to these folks. I mean, Alderman Simmons and I hear from them all the time, and we're struggling with how we can enhance livability in a neighborhood and provide housing for lots of people, whether they're seniors, whether they're students, whether they're folks who want to have people come in and share their house to help pay the taxes. And that was the reason why I brought up the concept of the, of the rooming house. And that would be tied with a live-in owner. I wish that there were folks here tonight. I'm glad, Alderman Wilson, you heard from some of them. I think some of them have written to the rest of the council. But this is a real concern. And... But this is a real concern. And it may not be a concern in some of your wards, but it's a very, very strong concern in my ward for people who are trying to maintain not only the, their property values, but also the livability of the neighborhood. So I would respectfully ask that any of you who do have strong concerns about that either join me at a meeting with neighbors in the first and fifth wards, or at the next meeting, we can invite them to come and speak to council.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Winn?
I'll pass, I'd like to have the vote.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Ruth Simmons, and then Alderman Rainey.
So I guess these concerns are unique to Alderman, Fisk, and I. And I'm very concerned about the residents that are calling about those quality-of-life issues, but I'm also very concerned about the way it's being managed now and the conditions in which a lot of our students are living in. It's just unacceptable. And to think that really this is their only option in housing, we just have to be more responsible. And if that means regulating it with a licensed rooming house, it's something that I think we should hold and have a community discussion about. It's that important. In addition to that, on the west end of the ward, also very vulnerable residents that are living in just really bad conditions. So if we can hold this, have a community meeting, invite the residents, so that the rest of council and the broader community could see exactly what we're talking about, because maybe some folks don't have a reference, I think that would be the most fair thing to do.
Okay. Well, this, just so everybody's aware, this was for discussion tonight, not for, for action, so that's certainly a possibility. Alderman Rainey?
Alderman Fisk and Simmons, if the rooming houses are being run well and people are happy there, I love rooming houses. I'm just saying that tenants are not protected as they are as tenants. Having said that, if people are living in squalor and if students are living under terrible conditions that you described, that is the fault of our inspections department, and property standards needs to be inspected. And they need to shut those places down and fine the landlords and put them out of business. We have laws that allow them to do that. Now, if we're not keeping up, shame on us. Shame on our city manager, shame on Director Leonard for not making sure that's happening. Why isn't that happening? I mean, really? I mean, why isn't that happening?
We've, we've asked that question before.
All right, let's ask it again.
But I think we just heard the answer from the students. If you, if you live in that-
No, no, I, I know, I heard that. But let's, let's get to the bottom of it. Let's get to the bottom of it. We know that there are four people, unrelated people, living, we now don't, we're not going to have that rule anymore. That's not going to be a reason to throw people out. We're going to be inspecting these units. The landlords aren't going to be getting away with that anymore. We've, we've got to get on top of this. You can't throw somebody out because they're four unrelated people.
Right. They'll be, they'll be, they won't be afraid to call for an inspection.
Can we refer this to P and D? So let's go to Alderman Ruth Simmons, and then I've got Alderman Wilson, are you done? Alderman Wilson, okay, so your light, I'm turning your light off. I've got Alderman Ruth Simmons, and then let's go to Alderman Fisk.
Yeah.
Then Alderman Braithwaite will have the last word, and then let's, we'll move this somewhere. Okay.
Thank you. So it was just last week that I asked that the Fireman's Park neighbors in Northwestern actually help me to convene the landlords that are providing student housing, so we could discuss this very thing. So that is, that's in the works now. We can kind of tie this all in, in together. So I just wanted to kind of let everyone know that that's something that we're working on, and we could maybe do that together with first ward and move forward on that.
Terrific. Alderman Fisk, and then Alderman Braithwaite.
Again, I just want to stress, this is not, this is not an issue about students 100%. Certainly, they're affected, but it's a, it's an issue of shared housing, ways to increase income, to pay whatever tax bills you need to. But I, I am concerned, and the reason, and I'll hearken back to Alderman Holmes, who kept stressing how important licensing is, and how frustrated she was not to have licensing. And I think licensing does help. We all know of landlords who get a notice when their building is going to be, or when their house is going to be inspected. They will ask people to leave because they know when the inspection's being scheduled. They will make it look compliant, and then as soon as the inspector leaves, it all comes back in. When you have a rooming house, you have regular inspections. Yes, you pay a fee, but you have regular inspections and you have someone living there, so if there's a problem, you know who to go to. That person is available. It's not somebody in New Jersey, or Ontario, or the Barbados. It's somebody right there on, on the site. And that is really important, not only for the maintenance of the building, but also for safety. And I, I want everyone to understand that there is, there is a benefit of living somewhere where someone is taking care of the, somebody is responsible, somebody is accountable, somebody is available on-site. Even though I'm sure we have wonderful absentee landlords in Evanston, it's great to have somebody on-site and, and much easier for the city. So Alderman Ruth Simmons, I think that's a great idea. I think we should definitely have that meeting. I don't know whether we want to have that meeting separately, or at P and D, or where you want to do that, but obviously, it's something that we, we need to do.
I was just going to make the referral. Okay, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great discussion. I definitely understand both sides of this conversation, and I would like to make a motion to move this to refer this to planned development for further discussion and action.
I think we should go a couple of months out, just so we have, I was going to suggest we have a, go a couple of months out to if, if-
Who's chair? I mean, whoever's chairperson, they can-
If you wanted to have a community meeting, just enough time to have that meeting.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes.
Should we have a community meeting first before it comes to committee? Not just have them here for public comment?
Yeah. And everyone's invited.
Well, I'm, I'm chair of P and D, and I think it would be better to put it out further.
Just have it here.
No, have the community meeting, but I think that it, to have it at the next P and D meeting or at a very, very quickly, I think we need to have the community meeting specifically on that topic.
Perfect. Well, I've asked for it for early February, so we'll plan on scheduling that, so.
Okay, go ahead.
So P and D sometime in March?
Yeah.
March 12th.
Okay, March 12th. So-
There you have it.
March 12th.
Do you want me to modify my motion, or just pass it along, and then Alderman Winn can schedule it whenever?
Good.
Can we pick another meeting? I really want to be there, and I'll be in DC, and it's my birthday. Yeah, that's great.
March 26?
When's spring break?
It's right around, it's, it's that, it's the last week. I think Evanston Spring Break's the last week in March.
Okay, so let's not pick spring break, since I and our community members would have an issue with that.
First weekend, how about the first meeting in April?
Right, April 9.
April 9? Okay, it'll go on P and D.
And that's before people have to sign their leases, so.
Oh, yeah.
Great. Okay, let's go on. We got two other items for discussion. We have SP 5 and SP 6. SP 5 is steps towards homeownership, first-time homebuyer programs, mortgage products, other strategies to expand homeownership for moderate and middle-income households here in Evanston. Is there any discussion folks would like to have on this item?
Go ahead.
If we like it, then, if someone wants to move it somewhere, what the next step would be?
I think because it involves money, it should go to AP&amp;W, so I'd like to make a referral to move item SP 5 to AP&amp;W.
For a second?
Second.
Okay. To move it, I don't need a vote. Okay. All right, terrific. Alderman Rainey?
I want to hold the next item until we make a decision about changing the way we receive the payout money for, or the opt-out money for, I don't know when we're going to do that.
Second.
Okay.
And just so, for people that are kind of observing, we're having conversations in the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Committee to make determinations about how much money, how that's-
When we're going to get it.
When we get the cash flow, things of that nature. So it's going to be very relevant to how we're able to, or if we're able to do this. You know, I think it's more how as opposed to if, but-
Yeah, thank you, thank you for explaining that to folks. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Is there a discussion about, in that committee, figuring out a way to work towards units being included, so making the fee less attractive, the fee-in-lie option less attractive in having units?
That's definitely part of the conversation. It's one of the top parts of the conversation.
All right, terrific. Seeing no more lights. Oh, there you go. Alderman Revel snuck in, just, I was about to move on, all right.
Okay. Well, I guess I'd like to circle back to some comments at the very beginning of this evening, and that you also alluded to, Mr. Mayor, of the need, and we have a great set of action steps. Thank you very much to the staff for the wonderful white paper and some really great marching orders, and I think we're making good progress on these specific action steps. But, and I hesitate the word, used, to use the word "plan," but I do think we need a broader plan, or a set of guidelines, or some way to kind of wrap all this together. It's especially when I think about the Affordable Housing Fund. Our resources are very limited, and, and we need a discussion about, you know, what is the best way to use our Affordable Housing Fund monies? You know, what share should go to rental assistance? What share should go to landlord rehabilitation assistance? And how about some of our other strategies, like creation of new affordable units? So, you know, we're at the, I mean, I love these programs, but, you know, we need to have priorities and figure out how we really want to allocate these very scarce resources. And it really probably applies as well to some of our, the federal, the meager federal funds that we get. So what are our goals? And do we have action steps and strategies to really address the affordable housing needs of the various populations that we have in our community? We've talked, we touch on every once in a while about seniors, people with disabilities, families versus single people, very low income, middle income. We're going to need strategies to make sure that we're addressing the needs of all of these different groups, and, and how are we going to measure the success? I, I don't quite know how we want to tackle this. Do we need a subcommittee? Do we want to spend some time at our next, I hate, I hate to even put it off till our next big affordable housing discussion at the end of April. So I guess I'm looking for some response.
Well, okay. I'm glad, I'm glad you got that light in there, you know? I mean, I think, I, I think we've got a housing and homelessness, you know, board here, and, you know, we've had a couple of meetings, and we've been talking about this for a long time, and I think tasking to that board on this specific thing, which is, you know, what's, you know, and there's a lot of information, our staff has produced a tremendous amount of information, but what is, you know, the needs in proportionally, how should we invest this money? And the thing is, the HUD money has a lot of restrictions to it, okay? But this other money that's raised through the inclusionary housing has really no restrictions. I mean, this is, this is ours, or this council's, to decide how to allocate that. And so that's, my suggestion is, you know, housing and homelessness as opposed to creating, you know, another, we've got a lot of committees, I think, that are doing really good work around here that we've created sort of ad hoc. But if there was, you know, if this were scoped, you know, really, you know, clearly to that committee, I think that could be beneficial. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Can I just follow up real quickly? I think that would really be very appropriate, because I, the last affordable housing plan that we had in Evanston was produced by the Housing and Homelessness Commission. It planned from 2009, and Alderman Rainey's rental assistance program was the number-one strategy that they recommended in that program, so maybe that plan, so maybe we're finally going to act on that. So I, I'm sure the commission would be, would welcome the, the task.
That would, yeah. That would be great. Alderman, let's see, Ruth Simmons?
Thank you, Alderman Revel and Mayor Haggerty. In the fair housing laws, are we covering how our efforts will include accessible, like handicap-accessible housing? Is that a piece of this, or is that another bullet that we need to include in the discussion so that some of these units becoming available, a percentage of them are available to residents with physical disabilities?
Alderman Ruth Simmons, there are requirements for accessibility when you get into larger buildings, so that are in place for everybody. I think there are things we want to look at, and I think that expanding accessory dwelling units is a real opportunity to, because they're small and they're on grade. You know, you, you get benefits by looking at, at sort of housing as a way of making more accessible units over time, that are also not only limited to being in high-rises and buildings that have elevators. So we definitely have it on our radar. We've actually talked a lot, you know, sometimes people say, well, why don't we have everything made to universal design so it can be? One of the things you have to be careful of is then you're enlarging the size of all units to really accommodate potentially somebody in a wheelchair, in all cases, which increases the cost of housing. So, you know, we, it's absolutely on our radar, and we're looking at ways to do modifications to existing homes. That's one of the things, actually, the housing rehab program does frequently. But again, it's multiple strategies in different parts of our, you know, in other words, it can be single-family home rehab, it can be units in, high-rises generally are accessible to people except with, you know, really severe disabilities in some cases, but all those things can be looked at.
Okay. I just want to make sure in that fund that is unrestricted, that we are including thoughtfulness about that community.
Alderman Rainey?
I think before we really settle in on a plan, as recommended by Alderman Revel, that you let the Inclusionary Housing Subcommittee get a little more into the weeds. We haven't really, we just really had an introductory meeting. I think that's going to be really important.
Well, I think it'll take the Housing and Homelessness Commission, you know, a lot of discussion before they get very far.
But the housing, the only issue I have with that is that you're not very inclusionary. You're kind of very, you're not, you know, I don't feel like I know anything about that committee, and I, I want it to be more open, and I don't want it to be the end-all, be-all of affordable housing. That's what I'm saying. Let us get some work done.
I guess where, where my, where my head is on it, just looking at all the different committees and the taskings that we give folks, is that, you know, we've got lots of different, you know, ideas and, and roads that we're traveling down here with affordable housing, inclusionary housing being one, but at the end, at the end of the day, well, you're actually right, Alderman Rainey. I mean, at the end of the day, it could be, it could be that, hey, you know what? It's some kind of requirement that affordable housings and units are always put into these developments, so there are no, there are no funds, you know, generated. But to the extent that the funds are generated, we do need to have a, you know, more strategic and thoughtful plan about what we're doing here in the city. So, I don't know, what's the general consensus that would people like to hold, as Alderman Rainey suggested? And we've got a meeting April 30th, Wally? So at that point, we'll certainly know a lot more about Inclusionary Housing Committee, and then could do a task if we wanted. Go ahead.
The, the city council, we're proposing the city council have another one of these special meetings as we're having tonight on the 5th of Monday in April. And I think from a staff's perspective, we agree with the mayor that at that point- And I think from a staff's perspective, we agree with the mayor that at that point, the Inclusionary Housing Committee should have a lot of work under its belt by then. So we'll probably know more then.
What do you think?
This month. Right. Because we didn't think we had any actionable items.
What's that? Alderman, we, Alderman Rainey did move it and I did second it, but we had the discussion. So if you want to...
It's just for discussion, anyway.
Yeah, it is just for discussion. Alderman Fleming?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what we moved. I had a suggestion for the affordable, for the commission. Thank you, sorry. Since they have a plan, because I went to one of their meetings, they have a plan that's like five years old, I think you said, does it, can they look in that plan since they already had things that we're talking about now? Can they look at that plan before starting a new one and maybe pull out some things that they think might be useful that maybe they've already thought through? And how to present those to us, email those to us? You know, like, can it get us thinking since they already have something already in there? Instead of starting a, yeah, instead of starting a whole new plan process, maybe there's some things in their older plan that we want to look at and have to think about, you know, at our April meeting, if we so choose. I'd just say for them to go out in this whole new planning process and then it becomes a plan that doesn't go anywhere. And if they did work five years ago, maybe they can revisit that.
Yeah, I hate to go into a big lecture about the plan, but I did just read it. And it was at the time of the foreclosure crisis, so there's a lot of discussion in there about how to respond to that. The, several of the strategy, major strategies have been implemented and we are talking now about the number-one strategy of the rental assistance program. I think, I think there's not a lot still there that would be really meaty to, for the commission to then just kind of send on to us, but really, because the whole ability to figure out how to use our Affordable Housing Fund is a whole new challenge and they haven't really had it. I think the commission could profitably start talking about this without, you know, making any kind of decisions that would interfere with the Inclusionary Housing Subcommittee.
So, okay, so let's go, let's, we're not going to officially task them again. SP 6 was held. And so I'm glad we had this discussion, though, so thank you, Alderman Revel, for that. And again, we can move at any council meeting if some council member wants to move it forward of a specific task for housing and homelessness. Let's go on to call the wards. Let's start with you, Alderman Winn.
Yes, I'd just like to remind the Third Ward residents that I will be having my office hours this coming Thursday from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM at Brothers K. Everyone's welcome, not just Third Ward residents.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. This is a referral for economic development, like a white paper on how form-based code helps or hinders development. I'm seeing it as a challenge to find opportunities to fund our TIF and I'd like to see if we should maybe look at making some adjustments to this form-based code that was established in 2006.
Terrific, thank you. Alderman Sufferton?
No report.
Alderman Revel? Alderman Rainey? Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I would just like to send our condolences out to the family of the gentleman who lost his life in a fire in the Ninth Ward, as well as thank our firefighters from Evanston, one who had a slight injury, I believe he's recovering now, as well as the fire teams from, I believe it was Niles and Willmette and Morton Grove who came out to assist.
Thank you for that, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to send out my thanks to the police and firefighters who responded to a, an incident at the Sherman Plaza parking garage where they were happily able to prevent a suicide. And I want to make a reference back to A&amp;PW for security fence on the Sherman Avenue parking garage. The other thing is I'd like to remind First Ward residents that at the Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday night, there will be a discussion of possibility of funding the North Light part of the Fair Point or Far Point project. So I hope everyone will be paying attention to that.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite? Okay, terrific. Alderman Wilson, can you please lead us into executive session? And then if everybody would stick around, we are going to do a roll call vote into executive session.
I move pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, that the city council convene into executive, executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitting subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C1, C11, and C21. Is there a second?
Second.
City clerk, could you take the role in this, please?
Alderman Winn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
All right, so on a nine-to-zero vote, we are recessing and heading into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.